What's up, Mr. A.K. Mr. A.K. Cole in the house, y'all. Mr. A.K. Cole. He gonna get a Grammy, uh, he gonna get a Grammy, uh, for YouTube, man, for, uh, for, uh, the most, uh, city council meeting videos. What's up, Ms. Nestor? They gonna give him a Grammy. Hey, I saw, uh...
With that being said, it's important to highlight that the business of the city of Flint must move forward. And we can't move forward with only four people that's signing up to do the work.
A deadline days away and a Flint City Council seat still left unfilled. Third Ward Councilman Quincy Murphy died more than three weeks ago with only 30 days to appoint an interim representative. But now, two meetings to interview candidates have been abruptly canceled. The first last week after a fight broke out. Last night's because half the council didn't show. One member alerted the city clerk ahead of time, but the other three were no-call, no-shows. Tonight, we are learning why. TV 5 Zane O'Meara shares what she's found out. Zane?
Meg, three of the council members who weren't at last night's meeting tell me they didn't show up because they didn't feel safe. I'm told by council members who were at the meeting, there were extra police officers, five instead of the usual one at the meeting. But Councilwoman Tanya Burns tells me she wasn't informed of any additional security measures ahead of the meeting.
I will not come back to these chambers until they are investigating this case, that they can assure me that my safety is not in jeopardy.
Flint City Councilwoman Tanya Burns, addressing why she was not at Wednesday's Flint City Council meeting...
My attendance is not a problem. But what I won't do for my family, I want to go home every night, like I want the residents to go home every night, and I want the police to go home every night.
The meeting was adjourned early once again, while council was attempting to fill the seat of the late Third Ward Councilman Quincy Murphy. This time, because quorum was not met, council members Dr. Liddell Lewis and Judy Priestley expressing disapproval.
I was told to suck it up, buttercup. I was told that if, if I'm scared, I shouldn't be in this, in this position. I show up, death threats and all.
I am deeply disturbed by the animosity that is shown on this council towards each other. We are colleagues. We're supposed to work together for the betterment of the city, and I haven't seen them.
According to the city clerk, Councilman Jonathan Jarrett had an excused absence, while council members Burns, Dennis Pfeifer, and Jerry Winfrey Carter all tell me they didn't show because they didn't feel safe after October 14th council meeting, which was adjourned after a fight broke out and a gun was brandished by someone in the audience.
On October the 14th, we had an insurrection within our council chambers. For over two hours, we had unruly individuals who violated our disorderly conduct. The president of the Flint City Council refused to enforce. She refused to answer repeated claims for help.
I never condone violence. Why would I condone violence when, again, I was at the same spot a year ago talking about I don't feel safe?
But time is ticking to get someone appointed into the empty council seat. According to the city charter, council has 30 days to appoint someone. Setting the clock for October 29th, I spoke with the City of Flint Chief of Staff Ed Taylor, who tells me if council isn't able to appoint someone by the deadline, the state may have to step in.
There's gonna be some conversations with the state, the Attorney General, to see if there's anything that may can transpire from that. I don't know. Is there anything that be, can happen financially with the council people? I don't know.
The next Flint City Council meeting is October 29th, which is the deadline to appoint someone to the seat. Lewis says they will have a safety plan in place. You can read the statements from the council members Pfeifer and Winfrey Carter on our website, wnem.com.
We got the original, uh, police officer here today. We got, uh, Officer Metcalf.
Metcalf?
It's like a family reunion up in here today.
I haven't seen him since the water.
That's, yeah, that's the original. That's the original officer.
He is.
Yeah.
Ms. Lewis?
Present.
Ms. Priestley?
Present.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is absent. I'm sorry, Ms. Winfrey Carter's not in. Ms. Burns is not in. Ms. Meshap?
Present.
Mr. Pfeifer is not in. Mr. Jarrett is not in. You have four members present?
We have four members present.
Madam Chair, point of order.
Councilwoman of the 7th Ward?
I want to, and I'm gonna make this suggestion out of respect for candidates that have shown up tonight to be interviewed for the 3rd Ward Council seat. We want to make sure that we can, um, do our best to, uh, ensure that their time has not been wasted as they've been asked to show up here tonight. And so I would like to put a motion on the floor, and this is in accordance with...
Oh, excuse me. Um, excuse me, winters hall. That is your warning for talking and yelling out, "I hear you up here." So you are, you, that is your warning.
And so...
Proceed.
Um, in accordance with Roberts Rule 40.8. So basically, this is me, Madam Chair, making a motion to obtain a quorum through means of recess, as the city clerk can call our absent members and see if they will come to the meeting so that we can not waste the time of the candidates. That is the motion. I'm putting a motion on the floor that we go into a recess so that the clerk can call the absent members to obtain a quorum, in an attempt to obtain a quorum.
All right, so, um, your motion on the floor is for our city clerk to be able to reach out to our absent co, um, colleagues in the 5th Ward, the 6th Ward, the 8th Ward, and the 9th Ward, and compel them to come to the meeting so we can handle the city's business. Is that your motion?
To, to ask them to please join us in the meeting so as not to, uh, waste the time of the candidates. That is the motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. So... Again.
That was A.C. Dumas.
And Mr. Dumas, that is your warning. So, so Madam Clerk, roll call.
Mr. Alamein? Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is not in. Ms. Burns is not in. Ms. Meshap?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeifer is not in. Mr. Jarrett is not in. The vote is four yes, zero no.
The vote is four yes, zero no. So the council will, yeah, so the council will go into recess to give the clerk time to reach out to the absent council members in the 5th, 6th, 8th, and 9th Ward. The time is now 5:54, and this special city council meeting is now being brought back to order. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Alamein?
Present.
Ms. Lewis?
Present.
Ms. Priestley?
Present.
Called and did not get an answer, left a voicemail, and sent a text message, and had no response.
Okay. And, uh, what about the Councilwoman Tanya Burns in the 6th Ward?
Uh, that would be the same. Called, did not get an answer, left a voicemail, and sent a text message, no response.
Okay. What about the Councilman Dennis Pfeifer in the 8th Ward?
Again, uh, called, left a message, sent a text message, no response.
All right, and what about Councilman Jonathan Jarrett in the 9th Ward?
Um, same thing. Called, left a message, and sent... Did not get a response.
Um, what's your information?
Um, go ahead, call from the 7th Ward.
To the clerk. Have any of our colleagues in, um, those that are missing, colleague in the 5th, 6th, 8th, or 9th Ward, previously contacted you, but you know, they'd be absent this evening?
And Mr. Jarrett did let me know that you were not here this evening.
Sir, our council colleague in the 9th Ward did make you aware of the fact that he would not attend this evening, that he had, he had something come up.
Okay, thank you. And so, um, and so the chair is going to give her colleagues time to respond to their voicemail and to the text messages. So, we will resume this meeting at 6:15. All right. And, um, that's one without the exception. The time is now 6:15, and this special city council meeting is now brought back to order. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Alamein?
Present.
Ms. Lewis?
Present.
Ms. Priestley?
Present.
Ms. Winfrey Carter is not in. Ms. Burns is not in. Ms. Meshap?
Present.
Mr. Pfeifer is not in. Mr. Jarrett is not in. You have four members present?
We have four members present. Um, so Madam Clerk, um, have you heard back from Councilman of the 5th Ward, Jerry Winfrey Carter?
No, I have not.
Okay. And, um, have you heard back from Tanya Burns, the Councilwoman of the 6th Ward?
No, I have not.
Okay. Have you heard back from Councilman Dennis Pfeifer, representing the 8th Ward?
No.
And lastly, were you able to get in contact with Jonathan Jarrett, representing Ward 9?
No.
Um, request for information, ma, well, point of information, I guess.
Yeah, what's your point?
So I do want to say on record, let's be clear, that our colleague in the 9th Ward, he did say earlier, he did contact the clerk earlier and say that he would not be present. Now, our colleagues in the 5th, 6th, and 8th Ward did no such thing, but our colleague in the 9th Ward did make the clerk aware, as is proper procedure.
Thank you. It is now 6:17, and this...
Um...
Go ahead.
Request for information.
Yeah, what did you request?
Through you to the chair, I mean, so, excuse me, through the chair to the clerk. I know that we did receive quite a few letters from the community. And because we are not taking any action, it is appropriate if we still read those community letters because those residents were expected to hear those letters this evening. Is that still appropriate, Madam Clerk? Because we're not taking in action.
I would defer to the attorney on that.
He can, as long as they're not taking action, they can make it.
That's your warning, no yelling out. Proceed. Sorry, officer. Officer, he's still persisting in this order. After he comes to the board, he's persisting to be disordered. This is what starts the chaos in this one committee chamber. And ma'am, you too. And that is your second warning. And ma'am, and you, ma'am, you have to understand. As you know, she has been there twice. On subsection, if you persist to be disordered, you have to leave the meeting. Ma'am, you cannot walk out of that sign and leave this order. You have to be stationed there with that sign. And that is your warning. So that is your second warning.
Man, she's stationed there, she's standing there. Come on now. Come on now, she's standing there. Come on now. She, she's standing there, she ain't moving around. Come on now. Hey, this bull crap. Y'all know it's no quorum. Cuffs, man, you know it's no quorum, man. You know they can't do nothing right now. You know it's not even a meeting right now, man. They don't even have a quorum, and you sitting up here letting them violate now. They get a lawsuit started, man, it's gonna be messed up. They don't even have a quorum, man.
Sorry, your warning. No yelling out. Gentlemen, right here in the white shirt, so if you persist, you will be escorted out.
I love you too, lady.
All right, that is your warning.
Man, she on some straight bullshit. I'm serious, man. Hey, cuffs, man, you setting this up for a whole nother lawsuit, man. For real, man. You like, "No, I'll just go down knowing this is a legal meeting," man. They don't even have a quorum. Come on now.
Right, yeah, so we're waiting to hear from the attorney?
So as I understand it, the letters that are sought to be read deal with the issue of who is to be appointed to the 3rd Ward Council seat. And as I read it under Roberts Rules of Order, reading 6, it essentially, it doesn't talk about decisions, it talks about the transaction of business. And then 47 is clear that even in the absence of a quorum, the assembly may do only limited things, such as time, fix the time, to which to adjourn, adjourn recess, et cetera. So I think if the reading of the letters relates to the transaction of business, I don't believe that that is allowed without a quorum.
All right, so, thank you so much, attorney. And so, um, we have noted that we have four members here. It is the Councilman in the 1st Ward, Councilwoman the 2nd Ward, Councilwoman in the 4th Ward, and the Councilwoman in the 7th Ward have reported to follow through on their elected duties. And so because of that, we have... Who is me, ma'am? Um, she has on the ground. Okay, ma'am. At least you know. That's your warning. And so, with that being said, it's important to highlight that the business of the city of Flint must move forward. And we can't move forward with only four people that's signing up to do the work. And so highlighting who's here, we would like to say that this special city council meeting is now adjourned at 6:20.
Metcalf, well, without Metcalf, we got hell up in, up in, up in the council. Metcalf files Flint City Council chambers. Liddell Lewis had him removed. She pressed so hard that she had Metcalf removed so her and Candace could just do whatever they want. Uh, 'cause Metcalf understands, he's, he had been there forever in council chambers. And there was a, there was a respect for him. She complained so much, he was removed. So he's back doing, he has another, um, detail.
I'm tired of fighting with these incompetent encamp hoops. I'm tired. I'm tired of. And then I'm tired of trying to get the people in the city of Flint to understand, we gotta stand up. I'm tired. At some point, y'all, you gotta say enough is enough. Just like last night at the city council meeting. I told cuffs, when, when damn Liddell started throwing people out of a, a meeting that wasn't legal because they didn't have a quorum, I think they can call, they can talk, they can, as long as there's no action taken. Because Councilman Mays, even though they didn't have quorum, he used to always allow the public to speak when they didn't have a quorum. I told cuffs, you, you'll hear it on video. I said, "Man, y'all gonna cost this city a whole lot of money, man, because y'all keep on doing this bullshit, man." And then Candace gonna put a motion on the floor to go to recess. You don't even have, you don't even have five votes, man. How you gonna go to recess when you don't even have five votes? How you gonna say a recess without objection? It's not even a meeting, you don't even have a quorum. What are you talking about? Dumb asses. Man, Flint, Flint, man, we, 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 I said we. I said we, I'm including myself, too. I'm, I'm from Flint, I'm here in Flint. Hey, even though I don't, I'm not saying me, or you, or anything like that, I'm just saying we, you know? I'm from Flint. Anybody that missed the meeting last night, you all have every right, council persons, council persons, y'all have every right to not have come to the meeting last night. Let me tell you why. What happened last week was uncalled for. Candace and Liddell asked them to come down there, and they played on their emotions. Judy Priestley said, "Hey, you know, condolences and this and that and that and this," right? And then Liddell asked her to repeat it, knowing that it was gonna cause some ruckus, man. Liddell, not like yesterday, she didn't say anything. But yesterday, she was putting everybody in their mama out yesterday, right? Let me, let me say this. Liddell, after everything that happened, went and said, "The family is welcome back." She made sure, instead of just doing the rest of the business, you got 30 days to fill Quincy's seat, 3rd Ward seat. You got 30 days. Instead of just saying, "You know what, this is a hot topic right here, let's just do the rest of the stuff that's, that's important to the city, and we'll, 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 we'll come back to filling that seat because it's hot right now." She didn't do that because she wanted, Liddell thrives off of chaos. Liddell thrives off of bullshit. Liddell is a demon child. Liddell is a horror movie, man. I'm serious. Liddell is a horror movie. A walking, living horror movie. The council persons that miss has every right. They have every right. And anybody that say anything different, man, that you on some straight bullshit.
Zane, a lawsuit filed in the fallout of Councilman Murphy's death has been dismissed. It was filed by Beverly Biggs Levy, who was running in the recall election against Murphy. The recall had been approved in June for November, but after Murphy died, it was decided to not count the results for that race and hold the election at a later date. She was suing the Flint City Clerk, the Genesee County Clerk, and the Secretary of State.
Yeah, they had the Central Park Five there today, too. Yeah. So it is a wonderful day here in the city of Flint. No, not because everything is perfect, but because we have fearless leaders working tirelessly on your behalf. I'm here with the Finance Chair Judy Priestley to discuss last night's meeting, or the lack thereof. Although council members 1, 2, 4, and 7 were present to move the, the city forward, we were unable to establish a quorum. The clerk reached out to each absent council member to attend the meeting, but they have yet to respond. This behavior is not conducive to moving the city forward. So I'm going to turn the floor over to Councilperson Priestley.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis. People of Flint elected us to do their business. That means being present at regularly scheduled council meetings, as well as other special council meetings. Last night, we rescheduled a finance committee and all the other committees. So it was a night that was already set aside for council business. Four members didn't show up. On that agenda was appointing our 3rd Ward Councilman. According to the charter, we have 30 days to appoint that person. That didn't happen. The residents of the 3rd Ward are being underrepresented because we have been unable to appoint that new person who will serve until a special election is held next year. By failing to come together and follow our rules laid out by the charter, we are failing the people that elected us and put their trust in us. Our differences cannot come before commitments to the city of Flint. The 3rd Ward does have a right to hear their, to have their voices.
We have a colleague here that was not here at the meeting, and we will turn the floor over to her to see why she didn't respond and why she was not at the meeting.
It's unfortunate that my colleagues made the choice today to try to pretend like civility mattered. On October the 14th, we had an insurrection within our council chambers. For over two hours, we had unruly individuals who violated our disorderly conduct. The president of the Flint City Council refused to enforce. She refused to answer repeated claims for help. We asked for help from the police, we asked for help from whoever we could get. It got so bad to a point to where a resident had to pull out a gun to protect and defend herself and her mother. People were not protected in these chambers. And that is at the fault of the president and the vice president. My other colleagues asked for help and called, "Madam Chair, Madam Chair." She refused to answer. They took over these chambers, everyone saw it. There was a death threat on my life, and I take my life seriously. I filed a police report with the Flint Police Department. You can hear on one of the recordings where I called Chief Green saying, "We need some help, you have a mess here. There's nine to 12 people that are here, they have taken it over." They had to cut mics, they took over the lectern, podium, whichever word you choose. It was pure chaos, and it was dangerous. Before, in the first meeting in Special Affairs, I went and talked to the one officer that we had, and I told him, "We're going to have some issues, you're gonna need to call for help." We had a senior citizen, Gladys Williams, who was threatened and told, "B, I will beat your A, shut the F up." She was sitting right there in the front row. She feared for her life and got up. I called to order, point of order, and asked, at that time, chairing the meeting was the Vice President Candace Meshap, to please warn her. Violence has no place in any public building, and that day was full of violence and rage. There was a conspiracy to incite a riot. Later, when I looked at video, it was disturbing when the individuals, the 12 individuals stated, "Liddell and them are happiest H. I came there to get Tanya, I came there to get Tanya." The video was all over social media. I submitted it to the Flint Police Department. It is not required that we come and put our lives in danger, nor the public's life in danger, nor the city staffers and administrators. nor the public's life in danger, nor the city staffers and administrators. In this room that night, people were literally running for their lives. City staffers were running from the, the back of council chambers to the front. Emily Door, the CFO, the Deputy CFO, and a senior citizen whose granddaughter was with her, who could barely walk. These chambers were not safe. Everyone's seen how quickly people are removed from these chambers like yesterday. For coughing, one person was warned and put out because she was not stationary with the sign. There's no such rule. They're making it up, it's not in our charter, it's not in the council rules, it's not in the Roberts rules. It's not. And let me address the attendance. My attendance is pretty damn good. My attendance is not a problem. But what I won't do for my family, I want to go home every night, like I want the residents to go home every night, and I want the police to go home every night. He was overwhelmed, he could not control the crowd. The Flint Police could not control the crowd. Therefore, an all-call had to go out, check with 911. At six thirty-nine, I called for help on my phone, it is a call to 911. There is no unexcused absence that if we're not here, they're just lying. They're lying, there is no if you're tired, if you late, it is not required that we call in as council members. There's no such rule. And so when they peddle this misinformation, it's, it separates our community. Now, I had a meeting with Ashley Capital, the gentleman Mark Quinn being on Friday for the first time, it was a great meeting. Five hours, almost five hours. We're not disputing that moving the city business is important, but I don't want him in harm's way either. Everyone saw the videos. Now, why isn't the Flint Police Department investigating this conspiracy to incite a riot? Why have none of us been contacted by a detective? Nobody has. I'm not putting my life in, in harm's way. And I'm not putting the public's life in harm's way. These council chambers were not safe on October the fourteenth, when a riot was incited. And the scary part was, we could not get our council president to do anything. When you lose control of what's happening in our city, you want city business, treat everyone respectfully. That wasn't done. And to have a sixty-five-year-old lady surrounded by nine people, and the only way that her daughter felt that their lives were in imminent danger, that should have never happened. On the first part of our meeting during Special Affairs, I went and spoke to the officer. I knew at that time I was told, "You're on a hit list." I did not leave. I'm licensed to carry, and I carry everywhere I go. I don't want anybody shooting at me, and I don't want them shooting at, and I don't want to have to shoot at them. Until these chambers, and this is investigated, which I've asked the Department of Justice, I have requested from Chief Green to have this sent to the Michigan State Police, so that it can be investigated to where it's impartial. We cannot have like what we had on October the fourteenth, it's embarrassing. Business was not done then because the people who were in charge of the meetings allowed a riot to incur, and it didn't stop. The videos are alarming, every news station picked them up. And it's unfortunate that my two colleagues decided to try to take a situation that could be so very dangerous and twisted to benefit as if four colleagues did not feel their lives were threatened. That shouldn't be happening. I have not been contacted by a detective or told it's being investigated. I have not. I will not come back to these chambers until they are investigating this case, that they can assure me that my safety is not in jeopardy. That night, I had to have a police officer, "Take me home, follow me home." I've had threats before, but this is the first time that I've said, well, I'm gonna, they told me, "Ms. Burns, we're taking you home." It wasn't even a choice. City staffers heard these individuals state that they were gonna get Tanya Byrne, are we gonna get her? So when we talk about people's lives, I have not been offered a ride, they have not given me a safety plan. They have not said to me, or my other colleagues who are on this hit list, that we're gonna make sure that you can come to and from council chambers safe, and that while you're here, you're going to be safe. No one told us that there was a safety plan put in place, they did not. So why would we come to put our lives back in danger when it'd be business as usual? And our last meeting, we had one officer and twelve individuals who with a mob mentality, with a hit list, on social media, a video that they made stating that Liddell Lewis was happy. It was a sad moment for the city of Flint. It was sad. And I'm disappointed that in my colleagues, who didn't even reach out to say, "Are you guys okay?" Because I'm not okay. I'm not okay, and the public shouldn't. These chambers should be sacred and people should be safe. All evening, people were called retarded, they were called B I T C Hs, F U. Gladys Williams, a seventy-year-old senior was threatened, and not one person was warned and put out. Not one. That has never happened, that is unprecedented. Now, this is disappointing, how do we move forward? I don't know, we're gonna move forward first with a public safety plan, which needs to be done. Making sure that council can come do our jobs and make sure we're safe. That's at the bare minimum, that we can be either transported, let us know that there will be X amount of officers. They need to do their jobs. And when you are chairing a meeting, it is your responsibility to put out those who are causing a disturbance. That wasn't done repeatedly, repeatedly, repeatedly. From Councilman Pfeiffer, from Councilman Jarrett, for Councilwoman Winfrey Carter, and for myself. Because there were different pockets, a pocket over here, a pocket over there, and there was a large pocket of unruly people over there. Nothing was done. And that should never happen. Now, however they choose to spin this, the truth is in the video. You can't change the video, you can't change the 911 calls. Check the 911 calls and see what people were saying. And how many came in? One officer with a mob of twelve. And none of them have been issued a warrant. Now, what we talk about on September the twenty-third, they strengthened our disorderly conduct. Some of the things that they strengthened it, I felt it was subjective. And they voted, the five who normally voted together, I felt it needed some more work. You couldn't get up and down our aisles, you see it, they took over the, the microphones. All this happened, and the President of Flint City Council said nothing. I can keep going. "Persist, number four, persist in disturbing the public in peace and quiet by loud aggressive conduct after having clearly been informed by the persons affected." They did nothing, they took over this microphone I'm speaking on right now. Number five, "Persist in disturbing the peace in disorderly conduct," it was disturbed, we couldn't even conduct the meeting. At six twenty-eight, I believe, the President of Council had to hit the gavel to state that this meeting was or, or, because there was no order. And I can keep going, number seven, "Noahling harass any person which is defined." I gave each of you a copy of it, and then it goes on to the back. These are our instances that should be and are punishable by the law. These are just our ordinances. And then let's go to the state law. You cannot threaten an elected official. It's on video. When there is, "I'm going to get Tanya Burns, I'm going to get Jared Winfrey Carter, I'm going to get them." And then when we have a council member to gaslight a family who was grieving, that shouldn't have been done. And that family was grieving and their grief was taken advantage of. They strengthened this, it's going to be enforced, and until they enforce this disorderly conduct, I will not be here. My ward supports me in making sure I'm safe, that the community is safe, because I show up to do the work. I don't care how many hours that I have to put in. But the one thing they ever assured me, my life should not be at stake for doing my elected duty. Thank you.
I do wanna approach the lectern again to just speak on that day. That day, when Councilwoman Machette was chairing, Councilwoman Byrne, she was the first one to appeal the ruling of the chair when she brought someone to order. We have a series of tape, and I'm glad that she mentioned all videotape, because we have the videotape whenever we bring someone to order. Councilwoman Burns would appeal the ruling of the chair when we're bringing order to this chamber. The council person that's finished speaking, she brought a stranger to my home. And this stranger, they have a restraining order against the Chicago Police.
We're respectful of you.
And as you all see, we let her speak and she continues to disrupt. That's not moving the business forward, that's not civility. Whenever you speak on the truth, we, we get interrupted. And so she brought this gentleman to my home, making my child afraid to come home. And the order that she spoke about, not one did she offer an amendment, they continued to vote down the safety members of the, of the, excuse me, the safety of the council members. And then... We had that ordinance come before us several times. And those several times, the same colleagues voted it down that are in fear of their life. That night in question, only thing I can do is call people to order. And when I reached out to call people, let's, let's go ahead and just say exactly what it is. The council candidate, Beverly Biggs Levy, her daughter pulled out a gun, we have a picture where no one, no one was threatening her life, people had their backs turned, and she was brandishing a weapon in these chambers. It's a problem that she was allowed to come to the chambers yesterday. So I am in full agreement with you with that safety plan, because no one that brandishes a weapon should be allowed. No one should be allowed to carry a, a, a... Do, do you all see what I'm talking about? The council president is speaking, and so this is what happens at council. I'm not gonna make this anything less than what it's intended to be.
Have you sent the plan to the other council members?
I don't have a plan.
We were not reached out to, and I did reach out.
Isn't that a simple way of handling this?
Go ahead, you guys.
So let's be clear, as we speak about the presence of the body, this is the first time I've ever heard anything about this plan. I have not. And when, and if our colleagues would have answered the call of the clerk when she called them, if they would have expressed that, then we would know.
I would like to respond to that. Can I have the lectern, please?
Well, no, time is of the essence, so, what's, what time is it?
So I, I do wanna say this. I filed a police report. I did the work. I'm only, I can only do so much, and so do my colleagues. I don't know if they're gonna be giving statements or not, but the safety of, of all of them in the pub, first the public. I knew at half, at during, after Special Affairs, that there was a death threat. I did not leave because I want the public to be safe. I talked to the one officer and told him to get help. There were several calls that went out, even an all-call. I was not contacted to the clerk until after the meeting started. This should have been done, should have been done before. I was not contacted. Those funds over. Now, you, we, excuse, yeah, I was Judy, I went back and, see, this is what I'm talking about. And I don't wanna do the tit for tat, because what I'm saying is, the truth will, will, will show you, and I was, I worked with Emily Door on that, and I went and talked to the Deputy CFO, absolutely. So, so what I'm saying, what I'm, what I'm saying is, our lives, if they wanna protect the pub, and this is the thing, in that stairwell was city staffers who were scared. Emily Door, the Deputy CFO, the CFO, a senior citizen, her grand, her granddaughter, you're talking while I'm talking. That shouldn't have happened. And, and without a plan for the public to be safe, without a plan for the staff to be safe, and for the council members, we were not told of any of these things. We were called, but we're gonna get a briefing during the meeting over a phone call? Why did they only give it to four people?
But, but I just wanna be clear that any member on, on council can bring anyone in the audience to order at any time, that's within our rules. And so, and so whenever anyone is yelling out, you'll see on video several times, I pleaded with my colleagues to please, as you see people are yelling out, as you see people are being disorderly, as you see that, call them to order. It's on video, so please go ahead.
So, you know, Councilwoman Burns has said that, you know, in some of these videos online, that, you know, you were happy about what happened on October fourteenth, did you respond to that?
Absolutely, absolutely not, why would I be happy? That, that, that someone is mocking, but we need people that are going to be serious about the city that they serve. That public, that public safety plan, I saw it. That public, that, that, that public safety plan, that, that public safety plan is, that public safety plan, that public safety plan is something that we can do. And so when we get that together, we're gonna see, on October the twenty-ninth, at five o'clock, we're gonna see if our colleagues have the political will to come to these chambers to conduct the business of the city, so we can bring jobs, so we can pass ordinances, so we can do what we're elected to do.
That you can feel safe coming here, you know, to make sure that doesn't happen?
Again, I'm willing to work with all of my colleagues. They stated on record that they will not work with me.
I never stated that, no, I never said I would have.
She stated, she's... She stated, we have it on tape, if you all would like to see it, it's on tape. She stated, I don't even, I don't even deal with you. Again. And again, see, this is what happens when, when they invite themselves to the press conference, but not, but not to the, to the meeting. This is what sets the tone for the people that flock to this kind of behavior. The people that endorse this behavior are the people that don't get a warning. And so we're trying to cut this behavior that is not conducive to this president. I'm willing to work with any...
Because of the chaos and the encouragement, and the derogatory comments made to council members. People standing up here talking about people's bras, diapers, calling somebody a pedophile, playing with little boys. That's the kind of tone.
And you know what, this is getting into too personal, this is supposed to be about the business of the city.
Well, I do wanna answer the question in regards to... And so, and so... So what I do wanna say is, will I, will I work with, number one, um, will, will I...
Again, a disrespect for leadership.
I'll, I'll wait to see.
Just like, just like she didn't, just like she did not make the meeting.
She's not allowing me to speak.
Just like she did not make the meeting, Councilwoman Priestley and I called for this press conference. And so, we just wanna know, is there any other questions that you all may have for us as we depart? Because I have to go and get my son.
Well, you can leave, I need to let them when you leave.
Thank you. October the twenty-ninth at five o'clock. And, and hopefully, we're, we're, we will have, not hopefully, we, we shall have a safety plan in place. And hopefully, we have colleagues that have the political wherewithal to come so we can elect someone to represent the Third Ward. Mr. Fong? All right, all right, thank you.
Okay, so I do wanna say, because of your question, um, this is why. And I want people to hear this. So, this was after the meeting, they went home to record this, and you hear them say my name. You hear them who was happy. They recorded themselves on social media, on Instagram and Facebook.